You're okay, you can keep going.
So tonight we have a new application. The application is for a front yard setback. And stayed in approximately six foot six inches. Which at this point, I would suggest to found that off to the benefit of the applicant because it was in the building or some other management to be back here again, so. I guess I consider, suggest a seven foot front yard variance if that's okay with the applicant. Prefer to use that as the number than if you have problems later on. Since this is a new application, that's the criteria that the fee has been paid.
Yes.
And is it properly advertised?
Yes.
Notices were sent to the neighbors?
Yes.
Okay. As far as county planning do is concerned, this is a residential area variance and per our agreement with the county, no referral is required. Has the secretary received anything since the meeting in addition to the application?
We received a letter of support from one of Ms. Mueller's neighbors and this survey was here tonight.
Okay, alright. There was I received a letter from one of the neighbors that in support. You don't have that one, it's from Paul Billings. Want to have a copy of it?
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there, does anybody have anything else in addition to the application? Got a survey presented to us tonight. But I assume this was the one that was submitted with the application. Okay. Yes, November nineteenth. Alright. I'm gonna summarize these two letters, we can get into the details later. Public hearing. They have a letter from Paul Billings. Who lives right next door to the applicant and owns property behind the applicant as well. And is concerned that this is the second public hearing for the same issue. Well, it's the same house, it's the same property. That last meeting, we denied that request. So this, this is a new application, a new request for different dimensions. The comment of our, this board mandating some actions, we didn't mandate any actions to the applicant. I had the request for the application, the rest of it was up to the code officer. And I believe he's continued the stop work order because it's, house is in violation. So the letter goes out about various things that we might have done wrong as a board, I don't think did anything wrong, I think we followed proper procedure and this is proper application or new request. The other letter we got was from the neighbor who owns a house across the road. He says in his letter, he's lived there all the time, but he's there in the summer and visits, his son lives there. And it's a letter from Kat Cyverood, Chancellor at Syracuse University. They own the property directly across the street. Their adult son lives in the house, they stay there much of the time, weekends, summers, and the university's not in session. And their property is the only one that faces directly across from the subject at West Forty Fourth, Twenty One Water Veil Road. The driveway is right across the street, their mailbox is right next to the applicants. And it said, we support the variance versus Mueller is requesting and do not say Ms. Mueller is requesting and do not regard it as offensive in any way, our property or to the neighborhood. That property was in a considerable mass before she purchased it. Delapidated, shad and overgrown vegetation, we do not mind the appearance of the house or garage or driveway very across the street. That's a second letter we received. I think each member of the board got that letter to make
Yes.
Well, the next thing on my list is vote on the environmental review. This again is a residential area variance and is automatically a type two. And no further environmental review is required. So like to have a motion that the DBA act as lead agency and they have determined that since this is a residential area variance, it is type two, no further environment review is required. Have such a motion. And also move, seconded? Yeah, comments, questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Before we we open the hearing, if we hear a comment from the applicant first?
Sure.
Yes, so anything else you want to add?
I think, Tom, on behalf of the applicant, I wasn't involved with the original placement of the house and I became involved after the fact. I think the board's familiar with the history of what happened, I believe, but basically they came in on the road seeking a variance and at the time, the building permit was submitted, the Ron Botting was submitted with the building permit. And if you look at the lot, if you look at the property, there's a rock of scarpment in the back. In fact, if you look at the existing house, it's probably five to 10 feet off the back and it is substantial rock of scarpment that limestone protrudes out of the ground and goes up progressively. And I believe that was the reason for where they set the house at that point in time. The surveyor did that several months before the first variance was granted. Why that survey didn't get presented to the town with the building permit or presented before her first variance application? I have no idea. But obviously, the homeowner was aware of that location, I believe she met them on site and that was decided at that point that really was the only logical, practical place to put the house. Again, when unbeknownst to us, that it wasn't part of the variance application. Basically where we are today is how do we minimize the impact, what can we do to get as much setback as possible? And so we looked at these structural aspects of the house, the roof system, what supports the main house and there's a girder truss over the garage that catches the trusses that go front to back on the house. And that's pretty much a critical point as far as carrying the existing roof load so that the entire roof doesn't have to take off of the house and rebuild. The other side, you know, forced to move the house back further, we have that rock escarpment and we have that grade change. So there's practical problems doing that in as far as the logistics of moving the house back to get a fifty foot setback. Pretty difficult, if not impossible on that lot. And I did give an affidavit, I gave some an affidavit on behalf of Ms. Mueller based on my projected analysis of the cost of what it would look like to move the entire house, which would be an entirely new foundation, entirely new excavation. You know, filling in the old foundation. Really wouldn't be able to salvage virtually none of the walls, it's a poured concrete foundation. So the entire house would have to be moved back, nothing really to salvage as far as salvaging the framing and the house itself. We haven't got any proposals from anyone yet, I've worked with people out of Ethica before. It's probably possible, but again, the cost would be in excess of $200,000 to accomplish that. That's, that's my belief on that one. So our current variance, what we've done is as much as humanly possible based on the facts, based on the situation. So we've minimized the variance that we're seeking. I think originally it was somewhere around nineteen feet and I think now it's seven feet, I guess we call it six, well, the house is already there, so it would probably be at the six foot, six inches or whatever the number is. I think that basically.
Okay, I was just gonna add, sorry, excuse me just a moment. As, as Tom had noted, that we are looking at minimizing the change to the existing structure while also increasing the setback. I completely, you know, respect that the garage currently is, as Tom said, is close to nineteen feet short, which is too much. So in this proposal is to basically dismantle the current garage and move, move the garage, rebuild the garage on the side of the property which would actually be at the current placement of that garage is forty eight feet from the road boundary. So one of the concerns brought up last time was, you know, the length of the driveway. In essence, it would only be two, two feet shy of the fifty foot setback. Now, the request was for, it's six point six feet, so I take your point of rounding up to seven feet. So I want to make sure it's slightly over six inches. Because the current, the current living area of the house on the north side, the front bedroom does that is the distance, the survey distance from the road boundary. So with the demolition of the current garage, there would be a breezeway which would connect the new garage to the living area. That would be a further footback, so five point five, five and a half feet approximately short. And then the garage would be setback a few more feet, so it would be forty eight feet. And of course, that minimizes the financial and structural impact, which I recognize is just to me. But also to the neighborhood, I do feel that it does minimize the impact both on the landscape, no further excavation of the of the lot, drilling of the rock behind the current location of the house. Which is both disruptive on the neighborhood and the, and the landscape. I do think it fits well with the current neighborhood. As discussed previously, I'm right on the Pompey Manlius Town Line. And although all the houses do on the Pompey side do meet the setback, if you go further on the Manlius side, a few houses down on the opposite side of the road. There's one house in particular, forty eight, forty four eighty four, that is, it's not even fifty feet from the pavement. So it, looking at the others, the Manlius side, which is half of my neighborhood. It fits well within the, or I feel it fits well within the current overall feel of the neighborhood. So that's this, and this would be my, will be my last time before the board. It's either this option to try to minimize the overall impact versus moving up the entire home.
In essence, we're cutting it to thirteen feet off the front of the house, which is, you know, from a architectural engineer and it's about the best we can do with what we got and so. I guess that's it, I'm here to answer the question of the board again.
The, well, the point of the house to the road is the north corner.
The north.
Yes, that is correct.
North, smart average of the factory. I'd like to ask for clarification on what is the, what is the distance that would be, would not need a variance?
Fifty feet.
Okay, and the fifty feet is measured from the point of the house to the road to I'm looking at three lines, you've got a road boundary, edge of pavement and center line.
Road boundary.
So looking at
Town law calls it a street line, it's definitely a street line and road boundary are the same.
Okay, so what I'm looking at is, it seems like the closest point is forty three, four inches.
Forty three point four feet.
And that needs to be fifty.
Correct. Correct.
Otherwise, you know, variance would be needed.
Correct, that's what the six point six foot variance, it's that what this application is for, yes.
And that, that, that dimension doesn't change regardless of
Correct.
Garage, that's where.
Right, so
Correct.
So think of it like this, and I think this is where you're going with that. The variance is going to be requested from the point closest to the road boundary. So anything, so once you, if you grant that variance, that there's anything along the frontage of that house that is more than that or less, depending on which way you look at it, it won't matter because the variance is seven feet from the, it would be seven feet, so anything that is more than seven feet away would be okay.
Okay, so, and actually by buffering the change in the garage.
Right.
That was the closest point at that time.
Exactly.
But it no longer is because you've taken enough off.
That's right, so when they say the road, the garage will be forty eight feet from the road boundary, that won't matter. Because you've already granted a variance, if you grant the variance, of seven feet. So that would be less than that. So anything along the frontage of that house, you're granting it from the closest point of the structure to the road, to the road boundary.
Right. If we push the garage back as far as we could to keep that passageway, you know, use the breezeway.
Right, and keep in mind, when we discussed this last week, it was the garage which really was infringing.
That was the bigger problem.
Yeah, that was what was infringing upon, or that was the portion of the structure that kind of was set set forward and was, you know, that was nineteen feet at the time. So that, that, that was kind of an appendage that was, that kind of made it out of the uniformity of that, of that house.
And I think as a provided, just a rendering of the front is just to show what it would, right, what it would look like there. So that front appendage is gone.
Can't really tell what's in and out from that.
That's great.
The garage is vast, two and a half feet from the from the front of the other portions of the mansion.
Is the floor pouring? Is this the ground right now, is there some pouring?
There is some, yeah, so it would be
That's what I understood, you, you used the term breezeway.
I just used that term, I don't know if that's the accurate term, but it's
As I look at this picture, I'm not sure what you mean by that breezeway. It's a four feet, approximately of the old garage. Children's bathroom from the new garage to the access door. So she'll call it a mudroom or whatever, there's, there's a four foot by twenty foot area there, you know. That we're gonna preserve because of that girder truss. It's where the girder truss bridge, which carries the tails of all the other trusses on the house.
But there won't be any closure then?
No.
Seven feet from
Right.
So don't look at this, keep in mind, we're, we're thinking distances here, right? All we kind of want to think about is distances. The, the actual structure, where, where the structure is. What are the distances from road boundary to that structure?
Steve, I'm worried too, that was submitted today. That we didn't get some.
We opened for questions, sorry.
Nice, fill out mark one.
I got a question for Tim. Prepare it in the back. They said, that's a, that is, the floor is poured for that garage already, would that be required to have to be moved or taken out?
Depends if you define it as part of the structure.
To be a patio?
That's what I'm saying. Yeah, they're bouncing it has to be walled. Be part of the structure.
We plan on removing it, we're gonna stockpile it with the tar and sand.
Park it's auto, okay. Yeah, camera, okay.
So the driveway, you're still getting under the garage from?
Yes, but it'll be
Driving around.
Right, actually it'll give her a little place to back up so she doesn't have to back onto the highway, so. That's good.
Right. Any other questions?
Yeah. You have to get would that driveway have to be approved?
Yes, we have that, I'll work out with the county, where else would it go with that?
The other day, the other garage was approved. I can't imagine that that would, yeah, ten feet over would not be
You're not moving the driveway?
No, we'll get the, the acreth on the water will be the same, there'll be a little bit of curve when you get up on the house. Again, we tried to push the garage portion back as far as possible, so to that board's earlier concern about that.
So you should already have a driveway prevent.
Well, actually, it was interesting because, you know, I, I kind of go back with the history of my family's lot. It was around nineteen sixty nine, which is where everybody lives now, Paul Billings and everyone else. And so there was an existing driveway there because there was a one car garage on the property. So we are doing a new application, it went, went around with the county. But there was an existing driveway there and I have proof of that there, but they still want a new one, so we're
Same place, same location as that other one?
Yeah, no, the, the location won't change, it's existing there. Site distance is great in both directions and they're fine, they're just, they're just going through the procedures and stuff.
They might require it a little wider, I mean, things have changed since when that driveway was put in.
It could maybe the curb radius, I'm not really sure what they're gonna ask for, we're meeting my then probably next week.
Okay. And that's, that's another one of those things that's under the purview of the county. Make sure that that
In fact, I need the signature on that for it to, there's a change of use before it was an intermittent use. Someone used it, confused it for, and this will be for regular residential, that's the difference.
They've already visited to confirm all the sightlines and everything, so it's everything.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Let's, if we want to open a public hearing first. Oh, made an open public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Let me make a motion to that effect.
Motion?
I'll make a motion. Open the public hearing.
You have a second?
Yeah.
Questions? Not all those in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, public hearing is open. Rules, give your name and address.
Sure.
Ask your comments, thoughts.
Okay, I'm Steven Roach, forty four ten Water Vale Road, Kitty Cooner from the property in question.
I'm sorry, say your name again?
Steven Roach, R O A C H. I had read through Paul's letter that you guys received this evening and there was a question, I'm not sure this is, is the purview of this group or not, but there was a question on septic and perk test and all that. Is that, is this a place to ask that type of question or is that a different forum?
The perk test, the well location, if you have one, that's up to the county health department.
Okay, so the septic questions and the perk test questions wouldn't be for this group and beat them down?
Yes. And there's no well here, it's public water, so.
I have a permit for the septic.
You do have the permit?
Yes.
Okay.
Just, just kind of curious, David, if the perk test, it's not our, not our responsibility, but if it didn't pass, then the house can't be built.
Right.
No, it had to pass an order for the house to be built.
Yes. My question is more about the septic than, than the perk, but yeah. Any other questions?
No, you mentioned Paul Billings, four four zero seven. I think we're all friends by now, aren't we? Well, maybe not. And, but you, you had mentioned receiving the letter, I did send the letter to you and to the town.
Yeah.
Was it distributed to the board members?
I don't think I reviewed that, no. You have an opportunity to look at it tonight, I, I have reviewed it, I have reviewed it and I reviewed the issues that you brought up, I don't think that from a legal standpoint, I'm the correct, this is a new application, it's it's a new application that was denied last month. It's, distances are different and the section of the house from which the variance is being considered is a different point. So I don't agree with you that this is, that this is the same issue, I think it's completely different application, different issue.
I think the state would disagree with you, but we'll leave that in advance.
And they can hire the state, they fired me to be the attorney for them, I'm gonna, I'm gonna advise my client.
You, you have to, you have to do that, of, of course, but I differ with that, with that opinion. But in addition, in addition to that, the, and maybe this question is for you. You had an application last month, the application was denied based on the criteria that was offered. Tonight, you're reviewing an application for the exact same thing, front yard setback with different numbers. Okay? Are, is this just a snowball? Can she come back, and excuse me, the applicant come back each month with a different number or a different problem or a different? See, I'm getting, I'm getting the flavor here and I, and correct me if I'm wrong. You gentlemen, and I, and I really appreciate what you're doing, how you do it, but it seems as though you made a determination that the application failed in its merits to receive a variance, to receive relief, period. It doesn't change. Now, you are reviewing it once more to review the merits to see if it is due relief. Ironically, the same relief.
It's not the same.
What happens?
It's not the same relief. It's a completely
Is it not a dimensional relief from front yard setback?
Yes, it's significantly less
Is zoning measured in degrees of compliance now because then
No, 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 no.
You know, there are
Variances, you, you're talking about two different things. Variances are determined by this board, which is the safety valve that the state has set up under two sixty seven A of town law to consider variances that people apply for because, because of situations or circumstances where, where the variance, where, where the dimensional requirements might not make sense because of a property. This board looked at a variance of nineteen feet last week for a garage that was no, 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 it was, no, it was a garage.
And a house, that is, no, that is, that is irrefutable because
It's not there is
That was identified, included of three to five or six
The variance was a nineteen
House.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, let, let me, let me explain, the variance was Yeah, let, let me, let me explain. The variance was a nineteen foot variance requested from the closest point of the structure to the road. That was the garage. Uh, that, that, which came forward from the rest of the house. Probably by thirteen, seventeen to fourteen feet. This board reviewed that under the criteria set up by the state legislature to make a determination as to whether or not. The variance being requested by the applicant, if it were granted that the, when they did the balancing test, whether the benefit to the applicant. Was significantly more than the detriment to the community. That's the standard that has to be reviewed. That's the standard that will be reviewed again tonight. And they are going to make a determination, the zoning board of appeals. Like they did last month when they said that the detriment to the community over a garage that was nineteen feet. From nineteen feet closer to the road than it should have, which came out forward from the existing structure. That it was out of place, if I remember, that it looked out of place because of the way the garage came forward from the house. So that was their determination last month when they did the balancing test. They denied the variance for that garage because that's the closest point to the road. The applicant has now determined, based on the denial, that they are going to move the garage back. So that it will no longer be nineteen from the road, it will be, and as I heard it tonight, probably forty eight feet from the road. The house, however, still is four feet closer to the road or seven, four feet from the garage, but it's. Too close to the road by seven feet, the house, that part of the structure. That's what they'll be considering tonight and whether or not the house as it sits on that, that lot. Is out of place or will be, will, will, whether the benefit to the applicant for requesting a six foot variance. Um, is greater than the detriment to the neighborhood by it being six feet too close to the road. The house, not the garage, garage is already set back behind the house. Okay? Does that make sense, Ford?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. So.
Is that what you'll be considering today?
Yes, yes. So next month when we're here again.
I don't know what's gonna happen next month, I'm not, I, I don't look into the future, I'm not a prognosticator. Um, we are considering a variance that's been requested through by an application of the applicant for. For seven, that's what we're considering tonight.
So what happens to the denial and the application? That you reviewed last month, you denied it.
That's correct.
Just swept away?
No.
That just, that just gone.
On the record, it was denied.
That, not only is it on the record, but the applicant can't keep the garage where it is. They have to spend, spend significant amount of money to remove the garage and place it behind the house.
It is academic how much money it costs anybody.
No, no, it's not academic because the balancing, not the balancing.
You have.
The balancing test is.
Hardship.
No.
And the hardship happens to be how much it's gonna cost you to bring it into compliance that you cannot consider.
You are using, you are using the wrong standard. Hardship is not the standard anymore. That went away about fifteen to twenty years ago.
Really?
Now, yes, it did.
Okay.
Hardship is not the standard. The standard is the five question balancing test that this board is going to have to consider tonight. Which is the balancing of the benefit to the applicant versus the detriment to the neighborhood. That's the value.
Encurred hardship?
Well, I think they've already determined that in last month and said that the, it is a self created.
Well, that's, that's gone by, what is it tonight?
Well, we'll see, we haven't got there yet, we haven't got there yet.
Mm-hmm.
And by the way, that's not determinative in any way, that's one part of a five part balancing.
Depends on how you weigh it.
Of course, and that's up to the zoning board of appeals to do that.
So you're saying, although I, I did review everything that you did in your resolution very carefully, and I don't remember it specifically saying. The variance was to grant relief from the garage setback. It was setback.
Sure.
The house included, and now because it's expensive to do that. And it would have been a whole lot cheaper if you just simply did it right the first time, we wouldn't be here, there would be no cost. And there would be no argument and I wouldn't have to discuss law with you. That would be ideal, but now we're back here again, virtually for the same thing, and okay, we disagree on the state statute two sixty seven. Okay, I'm not a lawyer. Uh, is this, uh, is this now ignoring the house? Could you say, oh, we'll grant the house? The house is seven feet too close to the road, but that's okay.
That's the, that's the responsibility of.
But that's what is being asked for, that's what I'm getting at.
That previous application, they didn't ask for seven feet to the house.
So next month when they ask for a, a different number, it's another application? I'm trying to.
The applicant is paying a new fee and it's brand new application every time, anybody can do that.
Month after month after month, you can bring in.
They're willing to.
You can be heard.
That's our.
That's the nineteen foot setback, go part of the. Part of me. Are you, are you finished?
But not yet. I don't know.
I'm happy to give up the floor.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
Yes. Russ Haynes, uh, forty three ninety. Wasn't part of the, the variance, I'm, I'm gonna ask the board directly now, that you denied was not only the garage, but it was everything that was in non-compliance. Isn't that true? Am I missing something?
We denied it.
We denied the nineteen.
Which structure is the house and the garage?
If, if we had a.
Now the house is too close still.
But she's changed the figures of her applicant, of the application.
But isn't that still part of the original denial?
No. She's changed the figure, she's back here again with a whole new set of plans, site plan with different dimensions.
Okay.
We denied the nineteen feet.
I think, I think we'll lose some picture, sight of the entire picture, the whole way this thing was developed. Where the original plan came in, it was approved by the building code enforcement officer. It got changed because it couldn't go where they wanted to put it. They went ahead and put it up with a different, without being in compliance. They get it all the way up to the end and now they're, they're, they've found out they're not in compliance. Denied, now they come back, I mean, it's, it's just gonna keep, I mean, what, what precedents that could have set elsewhere in this, in the, in the town? You just go ahead and build it, uh, you know, we'll figure out how to get it in compliance. It was denied originally and nothing's moved on the structure of the house.
It's not true, true. The, the garage, which is a part of the structure that will be moved back, more than nineteen.
Let me rephrase it then. Part of it was, was done and part of it is still in the original denial. That you voted on. That's my question to that. I, I want to clarify a few other things too. You mentioned the houses in the town of Manlis, okay? Houses in town of Manlis were probably built in the forties and fifties, had different code requirements. And they were, they were sat upon by the, the zoning board of the town of Manlis and decided by the town of Manlis, so. The structures in the town of Manlis are irrelevant to this whole situation, whether they're close, whether they're not close, okay?
I don't, I don't do that, but.
Secondly, uh. Mr. Severo's letter that says the property was in disarray is false, it wasn't. It was just vacant land with a, with a shed on this, in the back corner of it. It was not in disarray.
You'll have to take that up with him.
Well, I'm not taking, I'm just clarifying the stuff that was presented to you, and all right, so that you get. Uh. The whole picture, okay? And, and lastly, the pad is, is, if the pad stays, it, it's attached to the house, so that's not part of the structure then?
I, I think he said they're gonna remove it.
What was that?
I heard somebody, they was leaving and making a turnaround or something like that.
Required to remove it, that was a question I had for the code enforcer.
Patio.
Quarter then they're gonna remove it.
Uh, patio slack.
This.
Like a driveway, it's pavement. It, it's not.
A structure.
It's not a, a, a structure with laws be concerned with the setback.
It's a structure if it has a foundation.
That's not true. True. It depends on how the code defines it, and I don't think our code does define it, so then it's left to the code enforcement officer to make an interpretation. That's how zoning works.
It's a state code.
But, but, but we're talking about zoning here tonight, we're not talking about building and fire code, we're talking about zone.
Whether or not the front of the garage foundation is part of the structure, it is, and the state code says it is. So Tom says they're gonna remove it, he's doing exactly what he knows he has to do. Okay, I just wanted to clarify it.
You can build a concrete driveway too.
You can, but there's no foundation under a driveway.
In response to your comment on the houses in town Manlis, that is part of the neighborhood, that is part of the neighborhood character, we have to be. We're, we're not blind to that, we have to see that as well, it's all part of the neighborhood. I'm sure they got a different zoning and different setbacks, I don't know what they are. But. We, we do take that in consideration.
Well, I just think that you, that you lost, lost sight of the, of the overall picture of what, when this whole thing started, this, this is my point too. Is. You, you, you gave a, a building permit under one set of drawings. They start building, they can't build where they, that original drawing goes, they put another drawing up that wasn't. Approved by you guys. They hammer away to eighty percent project finish and then realize, oh, it's not finished, and then come in, ask for a variance, okay? Denied. It's, the house is still in non-compliance.
Yes. Oh, they're not living there either.
That's, pardon me?
They're not living there, I told them, because they're not supposed to live there, it's.
Well, they will be though. I mean.
Not if we don't give them a variance.
Well, that's cool, but I'm saying. I just want you guys to just keep. The full picture regarding this all, is all I'm asking. Thank you.
You know, if I, if I could add, um, I think it's fairly common for the zoning board to get a second application on a project. If one application is not approved. As, as in the case here, they're bringing a second application.
Yeah, I understand that.
And so that's not that uncommon.
Understand that, but the second application, everything's gonna be in compliance.
But that's what an application is for, is to determine that.
Right, so I'm, I guess, my point would be if, if this house wasn't even built. And they came in with this and you had the seven foot.
Sure.
Non-compliance would.
Built correctly, then we wouldn't be here, right?
Exactly, exactly, but I'm saying, anytime you see a second application, it's usually because they brought all of the issues into compliance. And they reapplied so they could, so they could build it.
No.
If they brought them all into compliance, they wouldn't have to come back here and it'd go straight to the code officer.
Yeah, if they could.
Not to do that.
They could pick up the house and, and move it back, X amount of feet, we wouldn't be here tonight.
Well, they built it where it was, this, well, you got the plans where we wouldn't be here either, so I mean.
Right again.
We can toss that back and forth in the court all night long.
But it's not uncommon for a second application for, for zoning area. And you're making it sound like that's, that's not the case, but it is, it happens.
It's the way I read the state statute, that's all.
I understand.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Yeah, that's. I'm Liza Lamb, I live at forty three eighty nine Waterville Road next to Mr. Billings. So from what I understand, you're going to consider is seven feet from the, the line detrimental to the neighborhood, is that how you'll be?
Something like that, yeah.
Doing it, so is that, so that's still to me, an issue, you know, seven feet. I, I agree with Mr. Billings that we were all under the understanding that that was all part of the original, you know, request, whether it was. The garage or not, so I just hope you consider that seven feet is still, you know, doesn't meet the, the Pompey. Colors as we see, I guess they're.
That's something we will consider, yes. Anybody else? Did you have a comment?
Oh, yeah, just, you know, I acknowledge a mistake was made, which is why we're here. Um, in terms of next month, this, this is it. We, um, you know, we evaluated based on the current structure, how is it possible to. Change the structure by eliminating the current garage and moving it and the, um. Majority of what was already built and, um, also preserving the character of the neighborhood and of the, um, landscape environmental, um. The area, um, but. Um, the current plan takes into account the existing root presses, so if it's denied, the only option is to. Move the whole house and that would be a full fifty feet, so there is no other plan. That would result in a next application because if that just doesn't work on the structure.
Yes, I would, it's far less substantial than the earlier refreshed.
That'll be a part of our discussion as well.
There's one question on Facebook.
If you have a floor plan, can we see two of these later?
There's one question on Facebook from Helen Bailey.
Hey.
Is the garage going to be good with the side variance?
Yes. Yes. Uh, what's, what's the side setback? It's variance, um. Yeah, that zone for garage.
I think it's, I think it's less than. It'll be less than.
I'm gonna guess fifteen, but.
The side yard, septic is fifteen, they're all.
That's what I thought, yeah.
I know it will be in compliance, I could check.
Okay. Um. Any other quick comments, yes?
Um, Helen Bailey, we're in Waterville Road. Um, I guess my question goes back to the very beginning of this whole issue. How is a lot determined by a realtor to be a buildable lot? Because this would not have happened.
We, uh.
There had been some checks and balances as far as what, when a lot is considered buildable or not.
I would say in, in this world, a salesperson can say just about anything they want.
Well, then, the problem lies with the.
Yeah, I agree. I believe.
And, you know, I feel sorry for mid, lower viewer, lower, yes, I feel bad for her, but. Someone was negligent here and, and it, it has snowballed.
We had that.
And cost her a lot of money.
We end up with that question quite often.
I mean.
We don't, we, we can't control the real estate people.
That's just my contribution.
Thank you.
And, and that's mentioned that, that we are a board that has granted variances. If you look at our record, you can go back, any, any town board has granted variances, that's why we're here. And again, we weigh the, the detriment to the. Community versus the, the benefit to the, the person that's, that's writing the, that's applying, the applicant. We have granted variances. So it's not like we're, we're here to just tell people no, make them spend, again, money's not the thing. We're people, we make mistakes, we're human. I, I'm, I'm a little, I appreciate the, the fact that these people went back and said, we had a nineteen, you complained about the traffic. You complained about trucks turning around, you complained about this and that. You wouldn't see that house if there were bushes and trees in front of it. You see the entrance to the driveway. Unless you had a drone. These people went back and said, oh, it was nineteen feet, way too much, now they're back with seven. And we have to decide if seven is way too much. We have to make that determination, and it's not easy. Seven feet, how much is that gonna hurt the community? What is that gonna do as a precedent? Is that gonna send somebody else goes build a house out of code and then come here and try to get that approved? Now, all the other variances that we've approved, have we had that issue? I would say no. We haven't had a flourish of people rushing to us from, because we approved a variance for seven feet or two feet or whatever the side yard was with the height of a building. Hasn't happened, we're human beings. We either, we either make this work or we don't. I, it's, it's. That's how we're looking at it, and we just have to weigh this thing, and this is, this is tough.
If you have an applicant who was told by, of, a surveyor in this case, that the house was too close to the road, would you still build it?
Absolutely not. Was the house built?
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
Yeah.
So. Here we are.
I think that's, sorry, I was just, that's a good point. We, you know, talked about some traffic and vehicles being able to go in and out last time. This is back, you know, a significant amount of old vehicles length. There's room to turn around where I don't think there was before, so. What's, you know, I don't think anybody's really talking much about what the detriment of the seven feet is tonight. That's why I'm, I've heard a lot about what we should be doing, but it's not. But the detriment is now, if anybody has input on that.
We, we will, we'll get into that.
But what, what's the detriment to? You as neighbors or the community? Is what, that's what we're trying to weigh.
But when you have, uh, an entire neighborhood. Where all the houses are eighty or ninety feet away. Yeah, it's different. And it's not, and, and since it's not beneficial to us in any way, as a matter of fact, it's very detrimental.
How is it not beneficial? How is it, I'm.
Our real estate taxes.
Of all the properties around it.
You know.
And you're, you are entitled to your opinion. Okay?
I am.
Property values are what I deal with every day. And I know what's gonna happen to mine.
That's the chance you take. That lot, no, that lot has been empty how many years?
It was an unbuiltable lot.
We didn't know that.
No, well, I did. When I bought my house, I knew it was unbuilt.
When you saw that lot for sale.
Cause you noticed with the previous owner. About that lot and that's why we offered to buy it. Because we didn't wanna have to go through this crap with anybody for any reason, okay?
Let's stop.
Agreed. We offered the owner of the property at the time, walk away, we'll give you a check today for twenty-five thousand dollars. It was assessed at fourteen. The smart person would have taken the deal and walked away. She knew it was unbe, unbuiltable. She knew it when she offered it for sale. And I contest that this young lady knew it was unbuiltable when she bought it. And to me, that is self-incurred, I'm sorry.
The, uh, the values is.
We've had this issue in our neighborhood, there was a lot that sat empty. Nobody thought about it. Till somebody put a house, yes, it wasn't as big and fancy as the other neighbor's houses. And now everybody complained. And I, my reaction was, as long as that meets building codes, there's nothing on the book you can say about.
We all feel exactly the same way.
So if you want control of the neighborhood.
Zoning and.
We're into a development that is controlled by an association.
We wouldn't be here, right?
I did not, I don't know that. You're saying that she was aware of that?
To you two times before this.
Not this part, not this part, this is all you.
No, no, no one is here as a native. That is contesting the house or her right to be there or the livability, no. None of us has said that. She's welcome to be there and, and quite honestly, we all empathize with her predicament now. But you know what my dad used to tell me? Stupidity costs. You do something stupid, you're gonna pay for it. Okay? I'm not trying to penalize her, I'm just saying, we were more than happy to allow the house to be there as long as it meant dimensional requirements. The two code enforcement officers in this town prior to Tim. Were, were, were talked to when we bought our house. Eight and a half years ago. Was there any possibility of a house being built on that land? No. Absolutely not, because if they did ever get the house rezoned as a buildable lot, it can't meet dimensional requirements. Lo and behold, here we are. Okay, we're not trying to make stuff up. This is just what happened, this is the way to, I'm not denying her the right to be there or her choice of house or so on and so forth. But she was informed and told by someone, it's too close and you built it anyway. Why would you do that? Why?
So. I think we're, uh. Maybe going around in circles.
I think, did you in the back have a question?
Yeah, Michelle Saunders at forty-three forty-seven Waterville Road. Um, I, I can understand that we need to take variances into, you know, we need to consider those and, and to offer them at times. What I don't understand is, I, it feels to me as though we've been here a lot and. Um, I think when we're considering, uh, changing the zoning of a property and then not following up and making sure that the actual property being built is conforming to that. Um, when we're not doing these things that I thought were fundamental when I moved here. When I moved here, I had, you know, a year and a half, two years of commercial real estate appraisal experience and. I knew to look at the zoning of the piece of the property around me to try to predict what the neighborhood would look like. I knew that every property that we did an appraisal on that was having a new build or a change in build. I had to measure every distance to make sure that it complied. I had to go in person and measure those distances and make sure they complied. Before the bank would accept the appraisal and move forward with it. Somewhere here is happening a fundamental break in how this should happen. And I feel as though our rules are being flouted, so. It, take it in a vacuum, okay, I understand this is a very difficult situation and there's already been quite a price put on the homeowner. But I, I wanna know from a community standpoint, why this seems to be happening? This is not something that I had ever imagined happening before when I lived in different municipalities. These rules were followed and if, if they weren't, it certainly didn't build. You didn't violate a, a cease work order that I believe happened, it's days after it was issued here. It feels as though these rules are being flouted for the people that are already living there in conformity.
Thank you.
I am not living there now.
And those of us who are already there living in conformity with the rule.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments?
And as far as the stop work order. When that was issued, they just kept running work. Right, every single day, they're in there every day.
You cleaned up the.
Just for. Excuse me.
All right, Dom.
Am I just?
Yes.
Floor?
Yes.
Or, Tom, do you wanna take the floor?
No.
Okay. They worked in there. Four out of five days out of the work week. Till. Early in the morning till late in the afternoon, because I could hear all the sheet rock coming in and out and all the. All the lumber coming and the, the, the big delivery trucks down there. So. Okay, just another thing to. For you guys to do, taking into consideration. In the overall picture.
Yes.
I'm asking you to remember.
Thank you.
Can I just skip onto that? Um, as soon as I was made aware the stop work order work was stopped. Um, it was stopped for two and a half weeks. I talked to Tim and I have confirmation that work could continue at my risk. The only work we've continued is to preserve the existing structure, um, to get heat. So that, um, I've been advised by multiple individuals that, you know, to prevent moisture. And, um, so. That was done at full risk with Tim's. Um, approval, um, and only to preserve what is already there and would have been done. Again, if, if this, this is denied, we're going to proceed with moving the house and the goal is to preserve the existing structure as much as possible. So, um, I, I was in compliance with the order.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? I think instead recommend we close the hearing. Board's ready. And they wanna make a motion?
I'll make the motion, close it.
You have a second?
One second.
Any further discussion? If not, all of them favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Hearing's closed. Welcome to stick around while we. Liberate and have some more class to give the applicant. But little hard comments and questions from the audience. For the applicant. Um. So. We have to make a decision tonight. Either. Approve the application as presented or approve it with confessions or. I. We do that through. We have in the past. Um, revealing the five considerations that we have to, uh. Discuss and, uh. Our attorney will help us through that. And, uh. At the end. We each have to, may have come our minds, whether the. Benefits the applicant. Outweighed that, I'll say, in welfare of the community. So. If I could ask Tim to, uh. Go through those five, uh. Considerations. I've got it.
All, all the guy chose to pull it up right here.
So.
Um, yeah, the applicant has submitted. Their comments, should I read them briefly?
Sure. So you can read through each question.
Yeah.
And then, uh, you could provide the applicant's responses to those questions as it relates to the seven point variance.
They're all kind of lengthy, but I can paraphrase and if there's something, he'll let me know. Uh, item one, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other feasible method. The only other alternative. These are the applicant's words, would be to move the entire structure, which would probably cost over two hundred thousand dollars. And, uh. If I read it right, the cost of moving this part of the structure is somewhere around twenty thousand dollars.
Garage.
Garage, yeah.
That's where the word feasible comes in.
Yes, so I think I agree in moving the whole house would be not feasible. So. Some other feasible method? I don't think so.
I agree.
Any other? Comments on that?
If money wasn't an object, would these people move their house?
I think you do anything, sure.
I guess we, what are, what would be gained by moving it back the seven feet? Like what is that hurting? To me, last, a lot of the concerns from last time were it's by the garage is back further. You know, bigger vehicles can get in, cars can turn around now. So like if it were moved back seven feet, wha- what's gonna change from where it is now?
Well, that's. That'll come up under, uh. Change of character and so forth. Um, but I think as far as feasibility goes, it's. I call it a good compromise. But. Moving the entire structure would be. I think it's unfeasible. Any other comments?
I'm in the same place.
Okay. Number two, whether the variance will result in an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. Uh, of course, the applicant says that. Would not change the character of the neighborhood, um. Talks about setbacks of other. Buildings, uh. Well, within existing neighborhoods of both towns, that's. One thing I was referring to, we do have to consider, uh, manliness. As far as the neighborhood character goes. I think they've, they've gone a long way by knocking the. The, the garage off with the way it. Was stuck out in front of the rest of the house. It's now set back. But two and a half feet. Behind the rest of the house. So. It's much less of a. Intrusion into the. Fifty feet. Than it would have been.
The only thing that I would add to that, Dave, is I, with, with the prior application. I felt that the garage was a detriment. Coming as close to the road as it did. So I felt like that, that was my main reason for denying the application.
I agree.
Because the garage itself stood out from the rest of the house.
Yes.
Yes.
Closer to the house by nine.
Well, closer to the road.
To the road.
Right, so that was my main reason for denial a month ago. And I feel like they've solved that.
With the moving of the garage. And that, that was out of character because the garage was so close. It was out of character with the rest of the houses along that street. And now moving, and now moving it back behind the house by two feet changes that.
To else.
Yes, okay.
Not only is it set back two feet, um, from the house. On the house, uh, there's a. It's where the. Where the front porch is, uh, you know, there's one, two, three jags in the front wall. So it's not a straight front, they paid attention to the appearance. Which is, is better in keeping with the. Character of the neighborhood, because there's some nice looking houses there and this, this one's got. Some character to the front of it. Without the garage with a pushback, like it is. I, I don't think this is gonna result. This plan, I don't think is gonna result in an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. Any other comments on that? Number three, whether the requested variance is substantial. Well. It's. Seven feet out of fifty. Fourteen percent.
And as we've talked about in the past, it doesn't come down to a ma- mathematical calculation. It's also in the con- sub- substantiality needs in the context of. The detriment to the neighborhood versus the, um, benefit to the applicant, so. While mathematically, you can certainly consider that, it doesn't, that's not a sole consideration by considering substantiality. That's how the courts.
The little fact driving down, can you see seven foot or not?
And the context of the entire neighborhood isn't substantial.
Well, again, the way they've laid out the house. It's. Almost a straight front with, with jags on it, character. Natural. And then it's certainly not as substantial as the. Previous request was, I have to compare with that. I shouldn't be looking at this. It is a new project and a new application. Um. Fourteen percent difference. I don't think is substantial.
Agreed. Actually, I, I, I'm not sure I completely agree with that and I, I'm, it's seventy, fifteen percent, whatever that number is. I think that's a fairly substantial number. Obviously, less than wasn't the previous application. But to me, that, that's still a substantial ask.
So I think of it as like driving down the road, moving if it were back seven feet, is that substantial? If you're driving down as it is and then say they were to move it back seven feet. What's the?
I know with seven feet, no.
Right.
But I think from a math standpoint, I, I think fifteen percent is substantial.
Yeah, yeah, math standpoint, you're going that route, but I'm, yeah, looking at it, driving that difference to me doesn't seem substantial, but.
Okay. Any other comments on that? Okay, number four, whether the variance will have adverse effect on physical or environmental conditions. Physical and environmental sometime that refers to drainage, uh. Blackened views, uh, could be anything, physical or environmental, um. blocking views, uh, could be anything physical or environmental, um.
I think the garage being where it is still affect any surrounding area, it's part of drainage range. Not sure what, how the gable's gonna be off that garage, but it's on this side.
What's shutting up inside?
It's fifty, it's high line, fifty five to the toes.
Is it coming down, is this coming down?
Looks like the roof.
Yeah, okay. I didn't see that. Yeah, so it's gonna be towards the road anyway.
Yeah. Um, whether it's seven feet back or forward is not gonna change back then very physical or environmental conditions.
Yeah, like I have a pretty good understanding of the environmental conditions, but what physical effect that might maybe be
Well, with, if it's going back another seven feet, you do have to dig further into the hillside.
Right.
So that's
So that's actually an adverse environmental. Like, if you move this house seven foot back, like where it should, where should they? You may be encroaching on the escarpment, which would actually have an environmental impact.
Yeah.
But but as a general rule, I might consider area variances. This is of the five questions, this is the one that is really the one that is least impactful, um unless there is some specific or unique environmental feature on the property.
Sometimes you get a barn next to a property line, it shuts off on that
Right.
direction to the neighbor. There's a, that's definitely a drainage environmental.
But in this situation, and actually the the environmental, the unique component of this lot, the environmental part of it is, would be impacted even more if you push a building back.
Okay.
At least it has the potential.
Okay, so the, the uh seven feet closer to the road might be better for the environment. For that one condition. Okay, anything else on that? Uh, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created? Well they didn't have to build a house here. So this
Put several people in that bucket. Real estate agent.
Yeah.
Yeah. Surveyor, the engineer.
Yeah.
Homeowner.
There's a lot of people in that bucket.
Yeah.
So, yes, self-created. Okay.
But when you're doing the balancing, you have to consider the benefits of the applicant granting the variance versus the detriment to the neighborhood. By by granting the variance. What I have the only identified detriment that I have heard so far has to do with property value change by having a house that is seven foot closer to the road and um or a quote allowance. You agree that that would have a detrimental impact on property values by having a house seven foot closer to the road? Everybody think that makes that that would be a detriment to the neighborhood?
I don't think the seven feet is gonna make that kind of change.
There's been no evidence pre- presented to this board, no empirical evidence that would suggest that.
It might be a smaller house than the rest of the neighborhood. The houses in Pomp, you're set back further, the houses in Manly, this might not be, and there's most people don't know there's sound line there. Drive it every day.
I think the structure is, would be more important to me than the actual seven foot issue.
You mean the look on that?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, in terms of property values.
Yes, okay.
And I think again from a sticking out out position to a lesser position that's pushed back from the road, I think you're gonna have a much more handsome structure. Much better looking. Well, I guess in general, I I'd say that the uh benefit to the applicant does outweigh detriment to the community.
You've certainly gone over the five criteria, um, and other than some concerns with substantiality in terms of mathematics, it seems that the board is that the benefits to the applicant outweighs the detriment to the community, that accurate is an accurate characterization of the five questions.
Do you have?
No. I feel that way, yes. I'll close here.
About this whole situation, um, the real estate agent is ab- absolutely at fault and that's really unfortunate in in your industry that that happened. Um, that's not something that you know, we didn't have control over that, somebody else did. He gave approval for the building lot to be built on, that was the first variance, I think, two years ago?
One year.
One year ago, in next August?
November.
November. Now for the building lot?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
A year ago.
Yeah.
Okay. And so a house could have been built um, according to code and it wasn't. Where's the fault in that? It's it's not, you know, we didn't approve that, we didn't approve that a house could be built in the wrong place. Um, between engineers and architects and the real estate agent and everybody else, all of a sudden the house is built. And I feel like the applicant understood that and was willing to make a change, a substantial change by taking garage down and rebuilding it. I I think that's substantial. But it still doesn't put the house in compliance, as you as you've mentioned and I agree, you're you're correct about that. So we could just, we could say, okay, and grant the variance. Or we could say, no, we're not granting the variance and make her pick that house up and move it six and a half feet. Now what benefit does that have if we force that situation? Well certainly not a benefit to the homeowner, but she'll have a substantial check to write. Um, but to the property owners around her that do not want this house built under any circumstance, how is that gonna affect them by picking that house up and moving it seven feet? I don't think it affects them at all. So if there's no value to moving it seven feet, other than to make it in compliance, I'm in favor in at this point of approving the variance. After, after going through everything we went through, I think seven foot is is a substantial, but as I weigh these things, it really comes down to people don't want the house built. But if I could pick it up and move it seven feet, then we all wouldn't be here. And is that worth going through moving a house seven feet so we can not be here? And for that reason, I would make a motion to grant the variance.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right, that motion made, second.
You also did, Don.
Very well. Any other comments?
But I told you to the fact that when we vote to deny or approve this variance, that we are not voting on everything that led to this, we are not voting on the one acre thing, we are not voting on any other. We're not setting a precedent, so to speak, we're not telling people to run out and do something against the code and then go to the board, take your chances with this, yeah, do what you, if you wanna drive sixty five into fifty five, have at it. You know, it's, it's, I'm like this way. Um, I believe these people it, the code is what the code is and they are not in compliance, you are correct. That's why we are here to either apply, apply or approve or deny a variance. We hashed this thing out, we tried. It it my my biggest problem is seven feet on a sixteen hundred and some square foot house. To me, there are way bigger problems in this world. And in this neighborhood perhaps. I I just don't see the problem with the seven foot variance.
Okay, thank you.
Nineteen was big.
Yes.
It looked big. And what's big and what's small, why is eight big, is seven, what what is it, what is it? Seven feet to me feels like they they can, they can have a piece of property and improve the neighborhood, real estate, whatever. Maybe they'll have three barking dogs in the yard, I don't know. Maybe they'll put up a HGTV antenna, I don't, I don't know, I don't know. What they'll do with the property, that's up to them, whatever. If they wanna get another code enforcement officer out to to knock down the dogs or to do whatever, then that's what we do. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Comments? Are we ready to vote? Yes, the secretary to call the roll, the roll call vote, please.
Okay, Sierra Haines, I vote to approve the seven foot variance. David?
Approve the seven foot variance.
Can pass you?
I approve, I approve the motion.
I'm intrigued.
I approve the motion.
Daniel Bauer.
I made the motion, so I'll prove it.
Okay. Thank you, the motion is carried.
There anything else that we need to do in the motion as far as building or codes, or that's just all left up to the code enforcement?
I think we're good. Yes.
So the plant, the driveway has a little bend to it now, is that all, just has to be approved by the appropriate people?
Yeah. I mean, I would No, that's all we got to do.
Thank you very much.
So they didn't understand.
Sorry for um all this work, guys. Have a merry holiday, happy Christmas.